We're going to reconvene here at the board office 7:00 PM and get started. Before we approve the agenda in front of you, we need to add, readdress adult meals as item 5A. We'll do that after the changing district credit card. So adding 5A there. Any other additions to the agenda? Okay. Let me move, we approve the agenda.
A second.
Okay, motion by Jason, seconded by Gina, to adopt the agenda as presented here. Any other discussion? All in favor? Closed. Five oh. Okay, delegations have none. Consent agenda. Your delegation? Do you like to speak? It's all right. Okay, consent agenda. We have approved minutes, payment of the bills, treasurer's report, clerk's report. If you look at addendum one or had a chance to look at addendum one, we have the substitute teacher list, that needs approved, recognition report, addendum two, and then approved donations. USD from Pete Segulia, $3,000 for the tech project. Booster Club donations, $200 for Mr. K and Mr. Falcon, and Mrs. O'Viller. Any questions on bills, clerk's report?
The charge on the clerk's bill? Guitar Center? On the clerk's bill?
Yeah, this is my microphone. We got a cordless mic from, from the gym.
I thought that was Guitar Hero that we bought for team building.
Yeah.
That would be good team building.
It would be good team building.
I move with the consent agenda.
Okay.
One second.
Okay, thank you. Motion by Gina, seconded by Jessica, to approve the items listed on the consent agenda consisting of: Approval of the minutes of July 11th, 2022 meeting, approved minutes of the July 19th, 2022 meeting, approved payment of the bills, approved the treasurer's report, approved the clerk's report, and approved the 2022-2023 substitute teacher list as presented in addendum one. We approve the Lincoln County recognition report, addendum two. Approved donations from USD 298 Education Foundation from Pete Segulia for $3,000 to be used for the LTech project. Approved the Booster Club donations to each of the following: Mr. K, Mr. Falcon, and Mrs. O'Viller. Any other discussion? All in favor? Closed. Five oh. Okay. Next, we have changing district credit card from locally Sam's Club card.
I don't know if this technically requires board action, but I wanted you to be informed of what I would like to do. We've been fighting Sam's Club since I got here and probably even before that. We've had the account to where we can't use it. We've had people's names on it that haven't been here for years, and then they say we can't have access to it. We've had problems getting our rebate dollars back. We got it all solved last month, and we got our cards, and it has Greta's name on it and an employee that hasn't been here for two years' name on it as the co-owner. So what I would like to do is find a card that gives us more freedom. I've been looking at the Capital One Business Card that pays 1.5% cash back on all transactions. It may kind of blow your mind, but last year we had a total of $17,000 charged to the Sam's Card and $33,000 charged to the Visa Card through the Bank of Tuscan. I'm not so sure that we shouldn't just combine everything into one cash back. It's not like we're gonna get rich off of the deal, but that would have been $50,000. We would have got $750 cash back to use towards whatever purchases we want. So I, you know, unless there's some objection or the board feels that it's, it's something that you need to, I don't think it needs a motion or anything, or just changing cards. I do want to move to where we have a little more freedom with the cards that we do have. I think if we have one here at the board office, I carry one and Mrs. Flynn carries one, that will give us a building credit card between administrators, a district card, and then I will have a card as well to carry for business like I do now. So, just a thought. Haven't applied for it because I just wanted to get everybody's input, make sure everybody's okay for it. Don't know what credit limit we can get. We're just tired of fighting Sam's Club, to tell you the truth. But if there's a consensus, I can move forward, I'll pursue that approval.
I think that sounds like a good idea.
Do you still have a, we'll still have a membership at Sam's?
Yes, yeah, we'll have the tax exempt membership. We can use any card we want enough.
Okay. Sorry, clarification.
Sorry.
Okay, now, let's see, we added 5A, adult meals, we need to readdress.
Yeah, and I'm glad Norm is with us tonight filling in for Greta. We got an email. Got an email from the state, and Greta, do you just want to go ahead and go so I don't fumble through it?
Okay, all right.
Or, sorry, I said Greta.
That's okay. I go by either. Okay. Reimbursement rates were released last week, I believe it was, for what we will get back from the state and the federal government for our student meals. And you have to have your adult meals priced at a rate, the highest paid student price plus $1.15 for lunch. If you do not meet that, then you have to supplement into the food program from another account to make up that difference. Scott and I looked at it, and our adult meals need to be $4.90 for lunch. That would be, we had $4.50 that we approved earlier as our best estimate. We were maybe a little closer, and that was quite an increase over last year. Our breakfast, it has to be the highest paid breakfast price plus 50 cents, and that would be $2.50. And we hit that on the nail, so we did good with that one. But we are asking that we would raise the adult meal price, adult lunch price to $4.90.
I move that we make the investment.
It's either that or lower the kids one, right?
The kid stays the same as what they were.
I know, but if they don't?
It has to be $1.15 above. We could lower the kids by 40 cents?
No, this is, this is the highest paid student price. This is the reimbursement that we get from the feds. Is, that's what they need by paid lunch price.
It's not overcharging the kids.
Not what we're charging.
It's just that they reimburse us.
So, so we are gonna get $1.19 for a paid lunch from the feds. No, that's not right. We're going to get $4.75 from the feds. I'm confused, I can have this every time.
It says we have our highest paid, this is the email from KASB.
I'm sorry, highest paid stu-, yes, you're right, David. Highest pri-, highest paid student price. So our high school students paid $3.75 for lunch plus $1.15. That would be the $4.90. Yes, you are correct.
You could lower the student meal price.
Yes.
We had to take that highest plus the USDA reimbursement rate for a paid lunch. You add those two together.
But if we reduce the student price, then we're cutting into what has been budgeted for the food program already, where we were trying to account for an increase in overhead costs as is.
Yes.
So taking that 40 cents off of theirs could be a huge, huge hit, even with the reimbursement from the state.
We don't want to go backwards to where we're supplementing food service.
Yeah.
We're down 17 and up to 23.
Okay, this is awesome.
One second.
Okay. Motion by Jessica, seconded by David, that we raise the teacher lunch 40 cents to $4.90 in order to comply with being $1.15 over our highest student rate.
$1.15.
$1.15 over our student. Okay, sorry. So that accounts for the increased number of returns. Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor? Five oh. All right. KASB delegate appointment.
I nominate Mr. John Button for that position.
Okay.
One second.
Okay. Okay, so Gina moved, David seconded. Sorry, put it all down here. Motion by Gina, seconded by David, that USD 298 Board of Education appoint John Buttonhoff to serve as the voting delegate for the 2022 KASB Annual Convention. Any other discussion? Sure, nobody else wants to do it? Okay, call in favor?
Nobody, I didn't get a go to that last year, so nobody even knows what you voted on.
I know.
It was a phone call or whatever it ended up being.
And nobody else wants to go to that?
Last call basically. I've got three people going right now.
Fairly confident I can do it.
Okay, because I've said that wants to go.
I should be at work.
Unless face to something, I don't. I said I cannot go, but she can put the reservation in someone else's case if somebody else wants to go.
Seven, twelve, thirteen.
This pointed, but I'll, I'll, I'll survive.
You've got a couple more years, we'll make sure we get to there.
Yeah, that's a good learning experience, usually. Last year was kind of meh, but in the past, it has, you have learned a lot, it's been very helpful, networking with people from other schools and districts, but it seems like last year there was a little bit of struggle that I have been up to stuff to even be of interest to people. I thought that normally it's.
Like getting to mention, you run out of meaningful breakout sessions, and so then you kind of pick through everything and just end up going, meh, I guess I'll go to that. But there were some where we were like, oh, we can't miss that.
And sometimes they're social with other school board members that are there.
Yeah.
Do you ever like register for your breakout at a time, or you go and then you just pick when you get there?
That's the way it's been in the past.
Yeah, I know, Grace said something about registering this year ahead of time.
For each breakout.
Each of us, but she said, you guys, I'm not gonna do that for you guys, you need to.
Remember, we had to pick them last year and then.
Then they changed it all anyway.
They changed it all up.
They canceled a bunch of them last year.
Yes, you do. That was kind of, yeah.
Normal, it'll be very good.
Give it a couple years, they will be back to normal.
And it's been in December in the past. Last year was a version, they moved it up some more.
Stuff like that, it's nice if you get there and then figure out what you want to listen to rather than make a decision once and, you know. Yeah, some of the changes that you wish you had, I don't think we made any last year that were full that didn't have room for me.
Yeah, more people.
Some of it, I think, is so that they can be down to the ones that were most popular lately. Okay. That's all on six, can we move on to seven? Playground equipment.
Can you do a source search for me? I'll pull that up. So I wonder, and Nikki will have to help me with my memory, because she knows it's questionable at times. So philosophically, I think we are starting to where we're getting very creative on how we provide stuff for the school, economically and just smart decisions. So one of the things. I should be HDMI two, I think, there we go. So one of the things that we did, and Nikki helped me with my mind, so we needed some classroom tables. We had a request for the two foot by four foot, two-chair tables instead of desks. Well, those things are very expensive, and Nikki found on Purple Wave where the Lawrence School District was liquidating a bunch of these things. So we paid $10 a table for those?
No, we paid $12 total for all of them.
Oh, okay, even better. So I don't know how many we got, 30?
Twenty-five, I think.
Close, just, if I'm close, just say, yeah. All right, done. So we got this lot of all these tables for 12 bucks. Well, the round cafeteria tables that collapsed with seats, and we needed some for the concession stand area, we priced those out new at $1,500. We paid.
Well, there's four lots, and I think we paid like $180 to $200 per lot.
Yeah.
So we got, how many did we get? Eight for less than the price of one big?
Yes. And when I talked to the people there, they have an elementary school that is nothing but storage, excess storage, full of executive desks and chairs. I go, what is this? Oh, every time we get a new principal, they get to buy all new office furniture and it goes on the storage. Well, I said, why are we getting rid of these tables? Meh, they just wanted a different color. So I like that school districts do that, because then we can get, and I looked at Mrs. White's classroom, those tables are what I would call good to excellent condition, because that's where the new classroom tables went, for pennies on the dollar. So somebody who's always got an eye out in the auction world, Mrs. Flynn.
It's a weird hobby.
She shared with me this auction.
It's a weird hobby, I don't know.
So this is in Roland Park, Kansas. This is in Roland Park, Kansas, and I drove there two weeks ago to look at this. It's, it's both units, both green units right there. They're wanting to sell them, because they're probably gonna buy new. It has some chip paint, it has some rubber that's worn off. This unit, when I looked up anything close to it, is about, I don't think you could buy both of them for $50,000. But I don't want this to get out, but currently, the auction is at $1,000. So using my, what I call cheap mindset, if we could figure out how to disassemble and transport, we could have oh, well over $50,000 worth of playground equipment for, again, pennies on the dollar. And I, and like I said, I went there in person, I inspected it. It has some wear, but it is nothing like what we have now. It would be exponentially better. The other thing that's interesting, this is grade school age. See if I can get back to my watch stuff. This is a preschool set. If you looked at the first picture, this was in the background. This is also at $1,000. So if we could get creative enough as a community to figure out how to transport these, and I got some strange looks when I was on my hands and knees digging through the mulch and the dirt, the parents and kids on a Saturday playing, and I'm digging down to see how they're anchored in the ground. They are anchored in concrete. I don't know how big of a job it would be, honestly.
Are they bolted to the concrete?
No, they're embedded in the concrete. So there would be some disassembly, we'd have to have a piece of equipment to pull them out of the ground. I, I'm just all about working hard to get something good for next to nothing. If you want me to pursue this, and again, I don't know what it entails.
How far is Roland Park?
Roland Park is, it's moving Johnson County, north of, okay, I-35 and 635. Yeah. It's probably three hours away. It would take a big, it would take either a caravan, a gooseneck, or an eight flatbed 18-wheeler to strap all this stuff down. It would take minds that could disassemble and reassemble. But what I'm saying is, we, we will never be in a situation where we're gonna throw $50,000 down on a piece of playground equipment. We had multiple injuries last year on Timber Town with that swinging bridge and those bolts to where we just shut that part down. You know, we have another piece of equipment where the slipper slide broke, and we just bolted a piece of plywood over the opening so nobody could go through a hole.
That was my next question, was the question I always get asked when I'm searching these things is, do we need it?
Is what?
Do we need it?
I think you, well, I don't know if Mrs. Schmidt presented to the board, but she was always applying to Jane, Dane Hansen grants for playground equipment. Our playground equipment's in rough shape.
Just wore out.
When you're.
It's not that old.
No, no. Was that building built?
I played on it.
Was that building built? I think it was originally. I'm not saying that, you know, I, I'm saying if we could pull this off logistically, I think we could improve our facilities. I think it's a huge job, I'm not gonna lie.
Does it have to be dug out or maybe just go and cut it to ground?
I don't know the answer to that question.
But if we cut it at the ground, then you're losing the clearance for.
Well, no, you just clear.
You just clear it by, by on it, yes.
I've, I've been chatting back and forth with this Donnie.
What about grade rotations? About grade rotations? Do you have any?
I don't have an answer for that. Yeah, I don't know.
Is there something? This is against the rules now?
I would, I would not be.
Ask questions later?
Well, no, I, I, maybe they need more compliant playground equipment, I don't know. I know a lot of the stuff now is ADA compliant, and we're dealing with that at the tech center and in every aspect. That's a very valid point, and I need to find out.
Is this a school or is it a city park?
It's a city park. Yep, it's a city park. And we have a playground inspector as part of our Green motion consortium, and I could probably ask him that question of, what if we did, I could send him this link, what if we did this with this equipment?
If we buy this, can we put it at our grade school?
Could we potentially step if you might use it?
And that's a possibility. That's a great point.
I think that discussion probably will be out before you go on.
I think it's fantastic find, and then we attribute this upgrade to what we have for our kids.
Just like they're moving in this year.
Yeah, that's the, that's the problem, is the logistics. So even if we cut it off, and even if we pulled the concrete out for them after we cut it off, there's still, that is a large number of pieces to haul.
How deep's the concrete?
I couldn't dig that deep.
You'd dig your shoulder in.
Would you dig that deep for that?
Well, just maximum, you pull it out, bring all the concrete on yourself.
Dig a big hole, get concrete on yourself.
Pull the concrete out.
This would take up, if you had a skid steer or something, about four, so you'd get them along or something.
That's what I was thinking.
Take a vein trailer, move as much intact as possible.
Well, and I'll go back.
Take the slides off.
I'm stuck, I'm like, I can't, I can't either.
Sometimes that outside helps. Inside's not true.
I tried to figure out while I was there, how could we could disassemble the four, leave these quad posts, and take this whole thing up as a unit? Take the slide off, disconnect it there, and then this whole thing lays down? I don't, because it's braced right here on a platform, it wouldn't flop around. And we spent a lot of time there, and in between going down the slipper slide, I was trying to figure out how to disassemble.
I bet a skid steer, it can disassemble pretty fast.
It's just a thought. The auction closes August 16. I don't want to put, I can do some checking on regulations and rules. I don't want to force this, it's just, when you see something like this, your brain starts spinning going, how can we? How do we make something work? This thing would take up most of the playground at the grade school. This has a huge footprint, and if you put them side by side facing east to west, it would take up the majority of that playground. It's that big. Now, the smaller one would fit great over at the preschool building, but it would replace almost everything there as well.
You were talking about moving Timber Town out, you'll put one of these where it sits, right?
Oh, no, Timber Town would be about a third of one of these. This would, both of these systems would pretty much fill the entire playground, which means we would.
We'd have a lot of that.
No soccer field, it would fit in the playground. Soccer field stays.
Stays.
Yeah, I'm not talking about expanding the playground, but there wouldn't be much left of original equipment there with something like this.
Take them out, the existing.
Yes, yes. Just, I just want to share it with you, because this is, you know, Mrs. Flynn has the same mindset that I have. How do we better ourselves with minimal financial impact? And these are the kind of finds, like the tables, that allow us to do things.
Do the rubber mat things come through, or?
Yeah, no.
Yeah, if you find out that there's no reasons, whatever, ADHD or whatever reasons, that price, I would totally, maybe pursue it. And we'll put them, we'll figure out the logistics of getting to it.
What are you thinking as a maximum price?
Well, every time I've played with Purple Wave, the last hour is the most frustrating. So this person has a thousand dollar bid, they could have a max bid in there right now of 10 grand, and you don't know it until you up the bid. And there's nothing that irritates me more than getting in a bid battle in the last minute or two, and they extend the bid when you're ahead. We've extended for three minutes.
I think that's how you can.
They don't do that at an auction, but they do here. Again, it's just, it was just something that caught Nikki's eye, and then I was like, hmm, and thought it was worth going to look at.
About timeframe for removal, if you did buy it.
The timeframe for removal is. Load out by August 30. It's not, yeah, there's not a lot of time for this, and maybe this isn't the timing. But this is how we're gonna get things for our district, is, is being sharp and being on the lookout.
Three of you have.
You can see, I can expand this picture here, that's the kind of wear I'm talking about. But compared to some of the current equipment we have, that's really not much wear.
Is that plastic or rubber?
It's a rubber, like a dip thing.
Well, between the two, I would say if we had to buy it new, $60,000 for both of them?
For the green and the, for the preschool?
Yeah.
I don't think you could buy the two green units for $60,000 from what I looked at, because they're two separate.
Oh, gotcha.
Systems.
Okay, gotcha, they're just connected.
They're not connected, there's just an alley in between. It's a system, space, and a system.
And then the red one, what do you think?
It's a single, that, that's probably the 40 to $50,000 unit from what we looked up.
Okay.
Playground equipment's expensive.
It's very expensive. And I, and we will never be able to.
Have you looked into any Kaboom grades? They do just playground equipment?
I haven't had to do playground until now.
So just something, Paul, you know, if, if I find something out, we could have a special board meeting before, what's the, yeah?
The 16th.
About the 16th, yeah. We could have a quick special board meeting to authorize play in the game. In my mind, it's probably gonna cost a few grand to get it here by the time we get vehicles and fuel and whatever else, but, you know, if we could pick something like that for 10?
Be a whole lot of money ahead. If you want to make sure we can use it before.
Yes, yep, that'll be my phone call tomorrow morning. It's gonna happen sooner or later. And those are the only two listed when you search, for now. Just wanted to keep planting seeds for thought.
Okay. You want to authorize anything now, depending on whether it works, or you want to just have a special meeting?
Paul, we, it's in the spending quarter, so why, you didn't need to have a special meeting?
Can you go up under 10?
Well, it says, the, the motion that we had kind of just formulated was to bid on and exceed if necessary.
Okay.
I don't know.
If you wanna make sure we can use it before.
Yep, that'll be my phone call tomorrow morning. It's gonna happen sooner or later. And those are the only two listed when you search for now. Just wanted to keep planting seeds for thought.
You wanna authorize anything now depending on whether it works or you wanna just have a special meeting?
Paul, do we, it's in your spending authority, so why do you need to have a special meeting?
You go up under ten?
Well, it says that the motion that we had kinda just formulated was to bid on and exceed if necessary. I don't know. I'm okay not doing anything right now until I find out some answers.
Call us in the last three minutes and say it went past ten thousand to ten thousand five hundred. If you watch auctions long enough, Big Iron always doubles the last day, so pretty much whatever the price is, when it's the last day, just figure that's gonna happen.
Really?
All the good people show up then?
You know, we go back to the old days, we'd just park some old ag equipment there and have the playground equipment.
Okay, uh, moving on, disposal of property.
I do need to add two things on here. We have an old, an old printer that used to print posters that doesn't function anymore, doesn't function correctly, that we would dispose of and also some computer switches, which I can't really explain what those are. But they connect things, but they're out of date, right?
They've been on auction for.
So.
Quite some time.
Yeah, those will probably be disposed of. Some of this stuff, we could put on our, a purple wave ourselves and see what we can, we can do. But some of this just isn't functional. Mainly the old phones. I don't know if anybody will buy those, but just going through the appropriate channels to get approval for disposal.
Um, the wrestling mats? I mentioned the academy and had a school interest in them?
Yes, we've had.
Were we looking at trying to sell those to others?
I have no idea. Without, we haven't even spent any time in conversation until, with them, until we know that it's a possibility.
And so you haven't discussed it with anybody? Cause we still have to use wrestling for their town. And I know they have their own mats, but I think they were utilizing those mats as well.
They, theirs are at City Hall.
Right, but they hadn't used the high schools or they weren't?
They didn't the year of COVID.
At some point.
They did last year, cause, but they never moved their back to high school.
Right.
Here's part of our issue with hanging on to those mats. And it's not to cut the legs out of any potential of a program coming back. They are an absolute pain in the neck to store. If we have a pause of a couple, three years for a program. I don't know where, I don't know how to store them. And at that point, if this program is viable enough, then I say we look at equipment. Those aren't new. So at some point, they're gonna be dated or out of their lifespan as well.
Well, that's not, I don't think it's good for them to stay rolled up and not use. It's an interior.
And I think it needs to be very clear that this doesn't mean we're doing anything to circumvent revisiting that issue further down the line. This is, if we're not gonna have it, then we need to do something. If you were to go look up at the square, the square footage that those things take and you can't move them. Uh, storage is a problem, aging in in that state is a problem. Uh, but it still needs to be very clear. It does not mean we're trying to usurp the ability of a program to come back. We just need it out of the way. And should it come back, we gotta figure out something different than just taking up space.
I think if we're gonna discuss disposing of those mats in some form or another, I think we definitely shouldn't talk to the Lincoln West End Club first. And see if they have the interest in utilizing them, purchasing them or however it happens. But I mean, they had twenty someone kids out the back for a grant last year. We don't wanna cut the legs out of underneath that. If they're depending on that, I know they do have their own mats, but.
We're trying to, um, come up with utilization of our facilities so that during basketball season, our facility won't be available.
Right.
This year for youth either. I mean, we we need to use the facility for some uses that we need. So those mats just, if they want them, they won't be used in our facility. I think that needs to be clarified.
I think that's fair, as long as they still have, you know.
The option.
Yep.
I, yeah, but they do have a big giant L on them.
They actually, you can, I didn't know this, but you can resurface them?
Yeah.
And that's what the school wants to do, that they would take, but they would save themselves thousands of dollars. They bought used versus new and just have a resurface to their colors.
Yeah. There's not, say, something out there, if you get a program back to buy it, we'll just, I bet you'll find some use for it.
What are the drafting tables? Are they the tall ones?
They, yeah, the ones that were in the workshop, um, they don't do drafting anymore in that magnitude. And so they're just not very friendly. Those are the only tables in the classroom. They're not very friendly for animal science, horticulture. So she wanted, she actually got the other half of the two by fours. So. And again, it's a storage issue. We don't have anywhere to put them.
Yeah.
Yeah, fully understand. I was just curious to know.
Yeah, the, the, the student ones, yeah.
And I'm guessing those are probably original to the building back. The drafting with a T square was a big.
Those came from the high school.
We do the, we do all.
From the old high school?
Yeah.
Okay, that's amazing.
Yes.
And then the two pictured up and thrown in ones that were just replaced?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The food is replaced?
Yes. Yes, food service has done very well with the, uh, all meals free and the reimbursements were very high. So we have a high balance in, in different accounts. That's one of them. And so it was an opportunity to get some things in place as we move toward more to the hundred percent, one hundred percent central kitchen to make sure that we had the equipment to pull that off. And now we have two fully functional ovens, whereas before we had an oven and a warmer sometimes, two ovens sometimes. And we're continuing to look at equipment upgrades in the kitchen.
So do you think those would be more just being disposed of or are you gonna try and sell them?
I'm gonna try to sell them, at least for sure, the one that's functional. They're good. I mean, they're, I can't, I think they're watches. I think both of them are. And their convection ovens, they've been around for a long time. I don't know if anybody needs them, but we'll see.
On that subject, we can't forget, she used the new ones today. When you open the doors, the fan stays on and you get blasted with hot air. Is that how they're, it doesn't cut the fan when you open the doors?
Those are.
She was curious.
Okay.
The instruction said that the air could have, so that you're not blasted with four hundred and fifty degree air when you open them, but it did.
Oh, which of course.
She said the.
Sorry, we'll, we'll see. Any wires, wiring, something?
Just so I don't forget to, I don't have that.
And then the bus?
Yep. I don't know if I get more scrap.
No.
I know they're not in there, but are they, like, they're just at the top of some.
Well, you know, their suggestion was made of put seats in it and turn it back to an activity bus. You can't, once you remove seats, you can't reconfigure a bus. So it really is just a shop. And and I don't know, I don't know what scrap metal's more for. Hate to make less on an auction than, it only has one hundred and twenty thousand miles on it. That'd be a pretty awesome camera. So that was a purple wave thought there as well. I think it just needs some touch up.
And then the teacher's desk?
Uh, we have eight teacher desks. Um, they're like the, we've had it forever, um, in storage. And every classroom has a teacher's desk, so I don't know why we have so many. We just don't have room for them. And some of the drawers are broken. Um, we'll keep a couple, but just to get rid of some, because we, we need, we don't have a place to put anything so nice.
The gold standard. Yeah. I was just gonna say, I know this, some people will take this the wrong way and get riled up, but in reality, we don't have a maintenance building and we don't have a storage building. We try to get by in that little one car garage west of the concession stand and call that a maintenance building. You can't get two mowers hardly in it. You can't do anything else. We have zero storage. But if I propose that we build some sort of a building south of the current concession stand and had somewhere where we could actually store our tractor, our implements that are out in the weather all the time and have a place we could work on things, you know, I I don't know how that would go over. But in reality, we don't have a place for those things.
Building at the grade school is useful.
Yes.
Let the mowers and tractor.
All right. Any other discussion on disposal?
Yes, there we have a motion here to approve the disposal of the items listed on item three.
Okay.
One second.
Okay.
Motion by Gina, seconded by Jason, that USD two ninety Board of Education approve the disposal of items listed on item three with the addition of the poster printer and computer switches. Any other discussion? All in favor? Close. Uh, needs assessments and strategic planning. I added this in here because we've discussed this a while back and it's sort of been just sitting there. Green Bush hasn't really got back to us on where we were headed with our, we had our retreat work day thing at the high school. We built five topics and we were gonna get a survey and get that out and it never happened and it's just kind of sitting there. And Scott and I talked, some of the things that we had on our list have already been completed. And so we're curious whether maybe a reassessment of that, whether we need to have another Saturday sit down and talk about it or whether we have a special Monday night meeting. We're having a meeting sometime. What your guys' thoughts might be working towards that so that we can set it up. And maybe, maybe as a board, we just go through and figure out the survey we wanna send out and we do it ourselves instead of going through the Green Bush and waiting on someone else to do it. But I think.
And I would suggest we will have to have a budget review meeting prior to our budget acceptance meeting. The new House Bill twenty five sixty seven requires that I present to you our academic, uh, what do we call it, data. And then we also will do a needs assessment to present to you. And then for this House Bill, we need to have the board aware of where we are. We need to have the board agree to the barriers that are keeping our students from succeeding. I ranted about that last time, so I won't do it again. Uh, but that has to take place prior to adopting the budget. And then I will be able to point out to you in the budget where we are addressing deficiencies. And our budget has to be approved, knowing that it addresses the needs and deficiencies that we identify. So we will have a special board meeting before September. It could tie into this pretty well.
At one point we talked about, John had mentioned that some districts have, if there's five Mondays in a month, on the this Monday, they do it. And this month does happen to have five Mondays. I mean, just tossing that out there.
It sure does.
That would be the twenty ninth. That would sure be open in my book. That's something I'm gonna work with you guys. And it doesn't, we don't have to go deep into the strategic planning. I just feel we need to review our five things and see if that's still where we're headed and then possibly develop a look forward. I, I think as a board, we need to look forward as to where we're going so that we have something to attain, kinda like the needs assessment, whatever. We need to know what we need to do.
And I need.
Reactive to a lot of things.
And now that we, and I'll share stuff here in a little bit, but I need your direction in prioritizing things that we need to fix. Because everything that we need to fix is more than I can authorize. So we can lay out things like the bathroom remodel, the window replacement, the library window, uh, repairs and everything. But I need your help in prioritizing where you want to spend money because they are all sizable events. And and maybe we can get one a year, maybe some years we can get one and some is an eighteen month before we can do something else. But without a target, I don't know where to shoot.
Yes, August twenty ninth. I have a motion here that could say USD two ninety eight Board of Education designate August twenty ninth, twenty twenty two to hold a needs assessment and strategic planning meeting at the Board of Education office. Do we wanna put that in conjunction with the budget?
Well, the needs assessment is part of.
The needs assessment is part of that.
And then the strategic planning.
I think the strategic.
Okay.
Okay.
Seven P M?
Seven P M? That's fine with me if that works with everyone else? Okay.
I assume.
Okay.
I second.
Motion by David, seconded by Jessica, that USD two ninety eight Board of Education designate August twenty ninth, twenty twenty two to hold a needs assessment and strategic planning meeting at the Board of Education office at seven P M. Any other discussion? Is there anything that we need to look at as a board, you know, I mean, we're aware of issues, different places, or anything new that like we need to tour type of thing or?
I was curious if we should move location maybe to the high school.
To the high school and look at things or not?
Well, that's where the most changes have happened this year.
Maybe we could show you what we've gotten accomplished and then show, re-show you what really needs fixed. Um, I don't know.
But are there more needs at the other school? Has less been accomplished at the other school than at the high school?
Well, like the things we've done over the summer have been pretty mild, minor, uh, replaced tile, the stripping of the floors, things like that, paint. We haven't done anything major.
The biggest.
Yeah.
Right. It's just, it's just been an interesting cleanup. You know, you you may have noticed on the report, there was a, a lot of money split with perozone on floor repair. Uh, we rented a piece of equipment that cost twenty five hundred dollars before we were done with it. But it's changed the look of the building because there were forty plus layers of wax that never got removed properly and reapplied properly. So we have, well, not we, the summer staff has worked unbelievably hard to strip that down to actual tile and start over. And I think you can see a tremendous difference in how the floor looks. There's still cracked tile, there's still buckling, but it doesn't have that sea green tint to it and and it looks fresh and it looks good. So if you wanted to see that stuff, we could, did we ever tour the windows that have the gaps? Okay, so that and the bathroom, maybe there's, you'll see the tiles and everything when we're there for the back to school breakfast, if you can make it.
Maybe there's no need. I just didn't know if there was a new concern that's came up since then or need to.
Not that, it's on my radar.
And everything else, they own a preschool still as it was?
They, yeah, I think they're doing okay.
They did.
I will say that at some point.
Thoring in the preschool summer?
Oh, yes.
We put new tile down there. That looks cool.
It looks good.
Um, we will have to address that gym floor at some point. It's been many years since it's been refinished and the last company I had there said that it can only be sanded down one more time and then we're out of wood. And then you're replacing the entire thing if you keep it. So when we refinish it the next time, it'll make it as bright and as white as the high school. But that'll be the last time that can be refinished, according to the people that looked at it.
And then that gives us what, five years?
Ten.
Yeah, maybe a break, push ten before you have to really sand it down again. There you go.
Gym floor.
They do sell that sometimes.
A section at a time.
Yeah.
Call the dr.
Okay, uh, here? Okay.
Okay. Board of Education office. Now that's what I wonder, does anybody wanna have food before or do I just have a meeting?
Just a meeting.
Just a meeting, okay. Seven P M. Motion by David, seconded by Jessica, that USD two ninety eight Board of Education designate August twenty ninth, twenty twenty two to hold a needs assessment and strategic planning meeting at the Board of Education office at seven P M. Discuss it to death, all in favor? Posed. Bye. Okay. Admin reports.
We don't have any. We are changing it on the agenda next month, just so you see, it's gonna be called building report. Because otherwise it's safer, people doing everything. So we'll just have building reports and try to fill you in on the score.
Okay. So superintendent's report, give that.
I got a few things.
I guess you'll get a talk.
I got one to say.
You can fill in while I pass it out things.
I got nothing.
So first of all, I'll fill you in on some things that are going on. My number one thing, I kinda stole the thunder when we talked about the tile. Um, I don't think that most people realize how much work goes into getting ready for school. And the, the amount of effort that has been put in by the summer staff to paint and strip and wax floors and clean carpets. And I mean, we're, we're cleaning stuff from the ceiling to the floor. And it is, it is not something that the public walks in and says, look what they've done. They walk in, they expect it to look nice, but they don't understand in general how much we are scrambling to try to get ready for school. And that starts the day school is out. The very next day, we're scrambling to get ready for the next year. So I wanna give a public acknowledgement to our summer staff, from custodians to maintenance to secretaries, to everybody that puts in the time and effort from the day after school's out to be ready to open. And, and we're in crunch time right now and people are, it just makes a difference to know that our summer staff takes pride in how the building looks. The floors at the grade school before day one are as shiny as shiny can be. They look so good, they do such a good job over there. Um, uh, it, it's just amazing how much work gets done in the summer. And we need to be cognizant of that. They're not always in a cool, air conditioned setting. And yet they, they get our buildings ready for our kids and, and I think they deserve a huge shout out for that. Other updates, we got the dowch caravan has been delivered. K, Kansas Highway Control inspected, it's ready to roll. The new Ford Transit should be delivered Wednesday. And I'm not sure if they're gonna do the K H B inspection, they can. If not, we'll have it inspected, it'll be ready to roll. Uh, the handout that I gave you, um, I was visited by two former superintendents, two retired superintendents. One of them I know, not really close, but I've known him for several years. And they are working with this company, Energy Solutions Professionals. And they would like to come September and present to you what they do, what they offer. Uh, they came in and they're, they're kind of in my world of efficiencies. When you're on a fixed income and you can't raise revenue, then you gotta get more efficient to save money. So they do a lot of things from L E D to H V A C to a complete analysis. And I want them to present to you, I know that we had talked about that other L E D company a while back, who said that they would save us money. This company will guarantee a percentage of savings. And I just think it's important moving forward. We currently have over four hundred, probably closer to five hundred burned out L E D, or not L E D, burned out fluorescent light bulbs in our buildings. I've been buying light bulbs ever since I got here. I have no idea why we have, what'd you have in the high school, three hundred and some?
Three sixty five or something.
Burned out fluorescent light bulbs. I know, great. So I think we really need to dive into this L E D and the savings. Again, you know, we, we converted these four lights right here from four fluorescent bulbs per canister to two L E Ds. And, and I think that that is our number one way to save money is in our lighting. So I'm gonna have them come in September and they're gonna present, but I don't know about all their other products that they do, but I was intrigued by the lighting because I think the longer we wait, the more money we're just throwing out the window until we get this energy efficiency thing under control. I think that's the low hanging fruit to us. I would like to report on summer lunches. And this is mind boggling. So June of twenty twenty one, last summer, not this summer, in June, I think it was twenty one days, we provided two thousand three hundred and fifty four meals. This June, hang on to your seats, we provided four thousand thirty four meals in the month of June. We increased in one month, one thousand six hundred and eighty meals. That is incredible because basically one person was pulling that off with help. One full time person with help. That is an incredible amount of meals. In July of this year, I had to do these by meals per day because in July of twenty one, we served all, uh, we served twenty one days, but in July of twenty two, we only served ten days. So I broke that out as meals per day. In twenty one, we did a hundred and five meals per day. And this year, we did a hundred and twenty nine meals per day in July. So twenty two hundred and nineteen over twenty one days in July of twenty one. And in July of twenty twenty two, we did twelve hundred and ninety four meals in ten days. That's incredible. It's, uh, you know, I think Norma feels the same way I do. If they pull that program out, that's tragic for our kids. Sometimes that lunch and breakfast was the best thing that happened for some of our kids for meals for the day. And I don't know where they're gonna go next year, but I think these results would indicate that it's a service well received. You know? So we'll see what happens from here on. But that's, that's a phenomenal increase. Help me up, please. I just wanna do a quick overview of, of how we ended the year for the budget. Oh, here we go. Well, that's coming up. So when I, when I got here, my Green Bush consultant and I, we went back to twenty fifteen and we started tracking finances here. Uh, and I, I took over here in July one of twenty twenty. So I didn't know how to put a red line in there. But I feel very good that the board charged me with addressing our financial issues as my number one concern. So I wanna share with you that we ended last fiscal year with more, with higher balances in our operating funds than we've had since twenty fifteen, with reduced enrollment, reduced funding. And, and we have been able to succeed with that. The next one is contingency reserve. We have not had to touch a penny of that to operate the school district. That is our, that is a safety net that has great value and continues to have great value. And the fact that it's untouched is fantastic. This is our capital outlay account, our bricks and mortar. And if you remember, I think I shared with you, when I started, we had a hundred and twenty two thousand dollars in it. In December of my first year, it was down to seventy five thousand dollars. And now we have more in capital outlay than we've had since twenty fifteen. And why that's important is what we were talking about earlier with the strategic plan and what to spend money on. We have to maintain these balances and then this is now, I feel we're at a point where our, our finances are stable and we are financially centered. And the money that comes in in our budget now can be utilized to address needs that we have and not be so miserly with some things, but use our budget for what it was originally intended to do. And that is to fund the operation of our school district. So to pull ninety eight thousand dollars of that to fix the parking lot, we can do that now. And it will be replenished with this year's capital outlay funding. And that's why I need your direction when we talk about these expensive projects. How do you prioritize this? Because I can tell you what we're gonna be at almost every single year in capital outlay funding. How do we prioritize those projects? But we currently have accounts in our operating funds that are, I mean, our contingency reserve and capital outlay. The state is comfortable with where we are financially, that we have the reserves for a district our size. And we can move forward with funding the operations of school. So I'm tickled pink about that. Uh, one of the other good things, and you'll see it when, when we end up with a hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars in supplemental general or L O B, that's tax money we don't have to raise for next year in that account. So we're starting with a cushion that we don't have to tax our taxpayers to get that fund to where it needs to be. So you can see that we've, we've maintained a decent rollover balance since twenty eighteen so that we don't have to go and, and generate a hundred percent of our L O B. So our budget looks good. It's looking like our bill levy will go down a little bit. We'll be reviewing that. I go to Topeka tomorrow with our budget to review it with the State Department. Um, but I'm, I'm really pleased with how that's going. So all of our funds combined, again, we are, we are in the best position we've been since twenty fifteen. And, and there have been some absolutely heart wrenching decisions that were made to get to this point. And, and this wasn't all about just saving pennies. This was about making some very difficult decisions. And this was the result of those decisions. Uh, and they should have, you know, they could have been made a lot earlier, but they needed to be made pretty quickly given our trend lines, which are all the same. Uh, basically downward trends and everything. So we've made tough choices. We're going to be lean and mean and we're going to be educating our kids to the best of our abilities. And we have a fantastic staff and I'm excited about moving forward with that.
And we need to acknowledge who has done that for, I mean, the hard work you have put in to make these things all happen.
We have a great team.
For us, so, I mean, but you were leading that team.
Well, thanks.
I think we have the right leader in place for our district to have the funds to fix the things we need to. They should have been fixed a long time ago.
Well, I love coming to work. We have a good team at this office. We bounce a lot of ideas around, Norma's outstanding with food service information. You know, Greta has historical information and we just have a good team. We have a good team. And as we bring both buildings together with our combined staff and the, the vision that Nikki and I have, it's just an exciting time, exciting time. I think we're gonna move forward really well. So. That being said, I just wanted to share that, that was the end of what I had. We're in a good place. And I appreciate your support in making some tough choices and getting to where we are. Go again.
Okay. Executive session personnel.
Uh, I think we need about a, okay, fifteen.
Okay. Says eighteen, so I don't know.
I assume fifteen minutes?
Okay.
Second.
David. Motion by David, seconded by Gina, that USD two ninety eight Board of Education go into executive session at eight ten for fifteen minutes with the superintendent for the purpose of discussing personnel matters for non-alien personnel and that the Board of Education return to open meeting at eight twenty five in the Board of Education conference room. The executive session is required to protect the privacy of non-alien personnel exempted. All in favor?